Good evening. I call to order this regular meeting of the Minnehaha County Planning Commission, and I will begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, please make sure that all cellphones are turned off. Please note that tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be rebroadcast via CityLink and posted on the www minnehaha county dot org site for viewing by the general public. Any action taken on the conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the planning office by Monday, November 1st at 5:00 PM. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the County Commission for a hearing on Tuesday, November 16th at or after 9:00 AM. The affected parties will be notified of the meeting date. Meetings of the County Commission are held in this same room. Action taking on the rezoning applications during the public hearing tonight are a recommendation that will be forwarded to the County Commission for another public hearing on Tuesday, November 23rd, 2021, at or after 9:00 AM. Meetings of the County Commission are held in this same room, and the decision of the County Commission at that time will be final. First on the agenda is public input. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? At this time, the Planning Commission will consider the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are perceived to be non-controversial and meet all of the requirements of the codes and regulations. The consent agenda will be acted on in one motion with no public hearing on the items unless a member of the public, the commission, or staff requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. The minutes from the September 27th meeting are included in the consent agenda. Does any Planning Commission member wish to have them removed, anything, any item removed for discussion? Next, I'll read each item in the consent agenda and ask if there are any issues or comments from the staff or the audience. If any member of the staff or the audience would like to be heard on an item, please raise your hand, and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to address the commission later in the meeting. Any items remaining on the consent agenda will be approved by the Planning Commission with the conditions recommended by staff. Item number one is the approval of the minutes of the September 27th, 2021 meeting.
Motion to approve.
This is on the consent agenda, Jeff, so it'll go on with all the rest. Item number two is a rezoning 21-02 to rezone from A1 Agricultural District to I1 Light Industrial District on the property legally described as Track 4 with the exception of H1, end of exception, southeast quarter, Section 22, Township 102 North, Range 48 West, Brandon Township. Petitioner is Lance Huzzlesboes. He's also the property owner. That's three-fourths mile north of I-90 along South Dakota Highway 11. Item number three is conditional use permit 21-67 to make one building eligibility available on the property legally described as Track 1, Thirkelson's addition, southeast quarter, Section 22, Township 101 North, Range 52 West, that's Wellington Township. Petitioner is Thomas Thirkelson. He's also the property owner. He is approximately three-fourths of a mile east of 457th Avenue. Item number four is conditional use permit 21-68 to exceed 3,600 square feet of accessory building space requesting 4,750 square feet on the property legally described as the east 637.93 feet, southeast quarter, northeast quarter. There is an exception of H1 and exception of the south 142 feet, end of exception, Section 15, Township 103 North, Range 51 West, that is Grand Meadow Township. Ronald Knapp, property owner, is the same. That's approximately six miles north of Hartford. Item number five is conditional use permit 21-69 to transfer three building eligibilities from the north 264 feet. There is an exception of lot H4, end of exception, southwest quarter, northwest quarter, and the south 1,056 feet, another exception of lots H2 and H3, southwest quarter, northwest quarter, and the southeast quarter, the northwest quarter. There's another exception of lot H1, all in Section 7, Township 101 North, Range 48 West, Split Rock Township, to Lacy Track 2, and there's an exception of lots 1, U2R, and U3, an exception of Canachamas addition, end of exception, southwest quarters, Section 5, Township 101 North, Range 48 West, that is a Split Rock Township. Petitioner is Roger Canachamas. He's also the property owner. It's along six-mile road, approximately a quarter-mile north of Maple Street. Item number six, conditional use permit 21-70 to allow an electrical substation in the northeast quarter, the northeast quarter of Section 16, Township 102 North, Range 48 West, that is Brandon Township on the proposed plat, exception of Track 1 of Palisades Substation addition. This is petitioner is East River Electric Power Co-op Incorporated. Property owner is Eleanor Berkman. It's a southwest corner of 258th Street and 481st Avenue. Item number seven is conditional use permit 21-71 to allow outdoor commercial storage on the property legally described as Track 1, Funky's addition, southeast quarter, Section 26, Township 101 North, Range 48 West, Split Rock Township. Petitioner is Alex Halback. Property owners are Rex Gullickson and Jason Klein. That is located in the southwest corner of Rowena. We will move item number seven to the regular agenda. So I'll give you time to speak to that item.
I move approval of the rest of the agenda items 1 through 6 on the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion and second to approve the items, item 1 through item number 6. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. If your item has been approved, you're free to go. Item number seven. Kevin?
I guess I get to speak again. Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. This request is to allow outdoor commercial storage on the property that was just recently described near Rowena. And there's the location. The petitioner has submitted narrative and site plan. The narrative does describe that the property is going to be used for the storage of boats, campers, trailers, and similar items. The property is divided into parking spaces that are measuring 12 feet by 35 feet and generally in line with the perimeter. I'll show you the site plan right there. I guess the main part of the staff report in this conditional use permit is involving that this property is within the Red Rock Corridor Overlay District, which does have increased development standards over a typical commercial lot. This, as a commercial property, will be required to have a 30-foot wide buffer on the east property line because it's between a commercial and a residential property. That buffer yard will be required to have eight trees per 100 linear feet of property line. This is approximately 140 feet long, so there'd be approximately, or there'll be 12 trees that must be planted along that east side. The, then, included in the buffer yards, there's also a requirement of a 15-foot buffer yard from any commercial, new commercial development to an existing commercial development. So this would be 15 feet of buffer yard placed along the north side of the property line. And this 15 feet must have five trees planted for every 100 feet of buffer. Since the property line is about 500 feet, the, there is a requirement of 25 trees to be planted on the north side of the property line. There are the conditional use permit criteria to consider, and I'll highlight that the number one and number three of the criteria. Number one, the effect upon the use and enjoyment of the property and immediate facility for the uses already permitted and upon property values in the immediate vicinity. This is outdoor storage, which is a low-impact use, and it's already similar to what already exists in the area. And I'll go back to the aerial map. There is already storage units and outdoor storage in the property to the north of it. The property will have a fence around the property. Staff recommends that the fence along the east side of the property have slats in order to prevent lights from shining into the neighboring property use. The trees that are required to be planted will also help prevent this nuisance, potential nuisance. Number three that I said I'll highlight, the utilities, access road drainage, or other necessary facilities are provided. The property is shown to be accessed from Lead Rock Avenue, which is a gravel road. Some of you who have been on the Planning Commission for a while may recognize Lead Rock Avenue as something that's been discussed at great length at previous Planning Commission meetings. The plat of this property does show access from Lead Rock Avenue, and the petitioner is planning on access off of Lead Rock Avenue. So it does have access. The use will, I should note, in the staff report, it comments that it will increase impervial ground on the site through gravel and other surfacing materials. This has been brought up as a concern by one of the neighboring property owners, as increased runoff from the existing development has already had an impact on his agricultural land. So that will likely be brought up by members of the, and that are in the audience today. Then I'll go ahead and, with that in mind, skip down past the other criteria and list the conditions here. Staff does recommend the approval of the conditional use permit 21-71 with four conditions. And I'll actually go ahead and read through these so that everyone can hear them. Number one, the conditional use permit is to approve outdoor storage on the, on the described property. Two, a revised site plan must be approved by planning staff to meet all requirements of the Red Rock Corridor Overlay District. The site plan must be approved prior to construction of the fence. Three, the fence along the east property line must include screening slats through the entire length. And number four, all lighting must be fully cut off and directed downward to prevent glare from the spreading off the property. I just have a few of the aerial shots of the property to give an idea of the neighborhood where it comes off of. And with that, I guess I will be here for any questions, but I do think there's several people who want to speak to the item.
Any questions for Kevin?
Madam Chair.
Becky.
Driveway access. They would.
So as you see on the site plan, it'll just come right about the middle of the property, right onto Lead Rock Avenue there.
Okay. Any other questions for him?
Yeah, I guess one I'll add to that, that Lead Rock Avenue, part of the discussion of that is that it has not been accepted by the township. So it will be up to the petitioner to maintain the road up to his driveway so people can access it.
Yes, no, no further questions right now. I might ask you to come back.
Okay.
Is the petitioner here? Will you please step forward and state your name and address, or?
I'm not the petitioner. Alex Halback is the petitioner. My name is Brian Schmidt. I'm here representing him today. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here. I'm his commercial real estate agent, working with him on this transaction. I'd be happy to answer any questions that I am able to.
Any questions for him?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So Brian, is the whole area going to be paved?
The, the plan that Alex has communicated to me is to use a semi-permeable type of product to create a parking area, like crushed concrete type of product. So, you know, Alex is aware that if you have, let's say, a blacktop type of pavement, you know, all of the water is going to run off, and he wants to avoid, avoid causing issues for neighboring land as much as possible.
Do you know where that water would go?
The lay of the land now, it would run to the southwest, and there is a culvert that runs underneath Lead Rock Avenue that the water would flow through the culvert to the west into what looks like a grass drainage way in the, in the field to the west. And I assume that the, the water from the rest of the field to the south of this property drains in that direction as well.
That answer your question, Jeff? Okay. Anyone else have questions for him?
Madam Chair, I have another question.
Becky?
If I remember right, you know, the water's been an issue out there would be, there are culvert on his driveway.
The culvert is on the, on the, the, oh, I'm sorry. I don't know if there is a culvert underneath the existing driveway. The existing driveway is in the very northwest corner of the property. And actually, I mean, this is, this is a site plan that needed to be submitted, but if it would help the situation to have the, the access into the property further north, that isn't set in stone by any stretch of the imagination. But I do believe that, that there would need to be a culvert underneath the driveway, wherever it's located, just to allow water from further north to flow through and down the, the ditch.
Okay. Any other questions for him?
Madam Chair.
Jeff.
So what is directly north of the property there? Is that already full of storage there?
There, there are two.
This, this spot right here?
So there are two properties to the north.
I see it on the map, sorry.
Yep. The, the west property is storage units with additional outside parking on the south and the east edges. And then the property on the east is storage condos that each condo has been sold off separately to a separate owner.
Yeah, I see it on the photo. I'm sorry I asked.
Anyone else? Thank you. Anyone in the audience wishes to speak to this item?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Could I say one more thing?
Sure.
So this afternoon, I had a conversation with, with Bill and Rhonda Forshee, if I'm saying your last name correctly. And they brought something to my attention that we were not aware of in the past. There's a discrepancy of the exact location of the east property line, and Alex is in the process of getting a survey done, and hopefully the survey will, you know, correctly identify where that property line is. Bill described to me where the property line is, and it, it's different than what the, the GIS map shows. It would be, what Bill described is the actual property line would be 33 feet further west than what the Minnehaha County GIS map shows. There was a, there was a, a street, a city street that ran down that stretch, and when the city street was, and I apologize, I don't know the correct verbiage, abandoned or, or whatever that the correct word is, then half of the street went to each of the property owners on either side. And I think Bill will probably talk about that a little bit more in depth, but I wanted to, wanted to bring that up, that we were just made aware of that today.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience care to speak to this item? Will you please come forward and state your name and address?
I'm Rhonda Forshee. Bill, my husband, I live at 26673 Brownstone. Our property is just to the east of the property line. When we bought our property 15 years ago, in that grove of trees, there's a fence, and that's where the property line was supposed to be, or is supposed to be. As far as the Prairie Creek Storage Unit, we had to deed some property to them, the 33 from Greenstone Avenue, because they had incorrectly built on the other properties there. And so, just to be neighborly, we went ahead and deeded it to them. That was in 2013. But we just did the part for Prairie Creek Storage. It didn't include that 100 and, approximately 140 feet where that grove of trees is for this property. So we think we need a definite, definitely to know where the property line is. And in the staff report, it mentioned something about, let's see, the existing grove may possibly be, be fine for the requirement of the buffer. Well, those are our trees. There are no trees on that property that they're trying to do the commercial storage, outdoor storage. So we think it needs to be kind of defined as to where that property line is. So that's, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Ma'am, could you come back to the podium, please?
So is your main concern the property line?
Right.
If, if the property line is clarified, do you have any other concerns about?
No, as long as they meet all the Red Rock Corridor requirements as far as lighting, fencing, slats in the fencing, I guess we can go with it then, so.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Jeff.
I, I would also ask, I guess, is your house the southernmost and southwestern one on Brownstone Avenue?
Southernmost and the most west.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else care to speak to, please come forward, state your name and address.
RJ Wright, 48198, 267th Street. I'm going to use the map here. My brother and I own this 80 acres right here on the, to the west of Lead Rock. It's to the south, and we lease the north 80 from LGR West. So that would be just across the road on the, on the west side of Lead Rock. And the issues we have with this, it's all the drainage. We've got all this water that started when we developed this, which was smog, a few storage units, so we've got speeded up water and more of it, either park block, rooftops. And then Lead Rock is the road that everyone wants to use, but no wants, no one wants to spend any money on it or take care of it or accept it into the township. So they're really, the ditch on the east side is all silted in, and there's, there's no culvert here. There's no culverts anywhere. There never has. There was never a culvert put in here. And so our concerns have to do with all this water. When we get a heavy rain, it takes the top off that road, washes it into the faraway rent, and then that water eventually ends up down in this waterway and goes west. My concern is that if we use that as a farm-to-market road, if we use that road, what are we doing? Why do you, why do we allow or why do we do this? There's my concern. So there's, there's.
Will you come back to the mic so that it, they can hear it? You won't be able to hear it back there.
Yeah, this is recorded for broadcast.
Do you want me to start from the start again?
Nope. We, just keep going.
Well, anyway, I just thought it'd make a lot more sense if I was standing in front of the map, but I guess that's our concerns, and there's some challenges with Lead Rock. I mean, there's a, you've got granite close to the surface. I think that water, I think that could be done to get that water to go, keep it on the east side of Lead Rock, get it to go south to the culvert is what should happen, and that's, that doesn't happen. And that ditch has been silted in for years. That used to be kind of a ditch, and that road, the, the legal width, the width on that road's not 33 feet from the center of the road to the right of way. So those are kind of my concerns. And it's, it's been a problem, and I can't see, it's like, what, we're going to add to it? And then, you know, where, where they're talking about putting their access or driveway, that's about the lowest, the lowest spot. That's kind of where it takes the top off the road. So those are my concerns. Are there any questions?
Madam Chair, Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
So the, the water goes over the road and takes the top off. Is that what happens? And it's silted in at this point. So if that ditch was cleaned out, if there were culverts placed at both driveways, would that grass waterway take the, the flow that, you know, just south of the Everest property there?
I think it would. We, I was part of that project redoing that grass waterway. I'm the tenant, but I cost shared. We had to clean that waterway out about 10 years ago, and that's why I'm here tonight. It's like, I spend money on leased ground. We do this from time to time. It's not just with LGR West, but, you know, I can only do so much, and I can only do drainage for, but to answer your question, I think if they could get that water to go to the culvert, the township culvert, far, a little farther to the south, that it would be legitimate. And what I see right now is not legitimate at all. So, you know, that's why I'm here.
What happens to the water that continues down to the south? Or does it all go across to the west there? Is there any, is any progress for the water to go further south towards Iowa?
It eventually ends up in the Big Sioux River.
Yeah, all of it does.
But, go ahead.
No, I was just wondering if any of the water continues to the south there, or if it all goes, pushes west.
It has to go west. When it goes to that culvert, because just beyond the culvert, the, the natural rise of the road Lead Rock, it starts to go up. So that water ends up in our, in our waterway and goes west. And I've, I've talked to the township before to try and get the township to clean that ditch out, and they don't really want to touch it. They're kind of like, well, it's never been a legally accepted road in our township, so...
Is it a, is it a section road?
Well, Jeff, here's where it gets, depending.
Oh, he just said no. It's not, it's not a section line road.
Depending on who you talk to, you'll get a different answer on what that road is or isn't.
Yeah.
So, and that's a big frustration of mine. We've, we've been here before with, with trying to develop a long road, Lead Rock. It all comes back to that. It's like, well, define that thing, or who's, who's taking care of it or not taking care of it? And that's kind of where we're at. Although I, I'm to the point where I throw up my hands, let's just, you guys can make whatever decisions you want, but my concern now is drainage. So there you have it.
RJ, who maintains that road now? Anybody?
Well, Bonnie, the way that works.
I know, go ahead.
Well, no, good question. So I go to our township meetings pretty much year-round. We vote on that annually, whether the township is going to agree to maintain, and the township has it listed as a minimum maintenance road. So at our annual... So, at our annual township meeting, we vote yearly on whether the township is gonna do minimum maintenance, and it always gets approved, and they do do minimum maintenance. And so, you go out there, there's signs up that say a minimum maintenance road, and kind of the way that works, they, they, they do some work with it, but they don't do any more than they have to. And we actually close that down in the winter due to snow, because we have people, as you go farther south, people get stranded on that road, and then they go get Dick Funky out of bed at four in the morning, so. And, and the problem with snow is, we have cattle, we have a lot of cattle on that eighty, the hundred and sixty to the west, so it's not a true township road. You don't have thirty-three feet from the center of the road to the fence line. So, when they come and move snow, it, it, there's nowhere to go with it, because you need, you need that thirty-three feet for snow. So, what's been happening the last several winters, we, the township has barricaded that road off a half mile south where it hits 267, and then they allow the traffic, they keep it open right up by Highway forty-two near Rowena, but they put a barricade in just to the south of Smook Storage Unit in the winter to, to keep traffic off of there, so.
Okay, any questions for him? I guess not. Thanks, RJ.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else care to speak to this item? Are you sure you can come back up?
So, the reason I'm here is because Alex is considering bringing me in as a partner on this property, and if I do become a partner, then it would most certainly be my highest priority to work with the neighbors and not have a negative impact on them. I'm, I'm a farm kid, grew up in, in Davis, South Dakota. If you know anything about Davis, it floods constantly there, so I understand the difficulties that, that people deal with when it comes to water. And I, I feel stupid saying this, but I haven't paid close enough attention to the condition of the ditch as I've gone out and taken a look at the property. But you need to keep the water that's on the east side of the property draining off of the existing storage units and this two acres as well, on the east side of the road, and in order to do, until it gets down to the, to the culvert where it can go through the, under the road and then into that ditch. And the best way to do that is to dig the silt out of the, the ditch along the, the road. You've got to give the water a place to go so it doesn't go over the top of the road. I mean, that causes all kinds of damage. In 2019, we had the Vermillion River go out down where I grew up, and it just destroyed roads. Water over the top of roads is about the worst thing you can, you can have, so. I personally would want to see that cleaned out and taken care of so that the water goes the direction that it should. And if I'm remembering correctly, on the site plan, there's a fifteen-foot setback from the edge of the road, or something along those lines, anyway. If there's, if there's gonna be a fifteen-foot setback between the edge of the road and, and where the commercial fence and property can begin, why not use that entire area to dig it out for a, for a ditch so that the water can, has a place to drain? So, now, I, I don't know how much my word, you know, means, since I'm not currently a partner in this, but, you know, that, those are my thoughts. If I become a partner in this, I'd make darn sure this is done, and I apologize that Alex isn't here, but I know him well enough to know that he would agree with me, anyway. There's gonna have to be a significant amount of dirt work done, and so the equipment will be out there. There's no reason that the ditch couldn't be cleaned out at the same time.
Okay, anybody else care to speak to this item?
Madam Chair, can I ask Kevin one more question?
Sure. Kevin, you want to come up here again?
Well, talking about the water runoff, what's the surface of that storage unit? Is it paved, or is it crushed concrete, crushed asphalt, or what is that? Is that all paved, or?
I think it's a little bit of both. I think it, isn't it? I, I'm pretty sure it's a little bit of both pavement and crushed products.
So, I was just wondering how much comes off, you know? Pavement really speeds it up.
Okay, anyone else have any questions for him? Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair. I know that townships accepting a road is, is a difficult issue. I mean, there are roads all around in Ellis and other places that it's really unclear as to who would maintain them. And I think, you know, whereas all of us know how to go to these places, they're not municipalities. I mean, Rowena is not, it's, it's a little bit of a neighborhood. Wall Lake is, is a neighborhood. Some of these neighborhoods have more people than the, the city of Sherman, or is, or is that a city? I'm not sure. In any case, and, and the townships are able to say, we'll take you, but we're not gonna take you. And we got some township fellows around here, and you're a former one, you can preach a little bit about it, but I, I'm very concerned about the fact that nobody owns this, and nobody owns the road, the drainage. And, you know, I, I don't see how we can let it go forward if we can't get it fixed.
Any other comments?
Adam, you're on the township board.
I know. I agree with you. It is tough. I know, we go through it every year. It's which ones do we want to maintain, or we get the calls, which ones are gonna be minimum maintenance and all that, but, yeah, I know. And cleaning ditches out is something we've tried to do quite a bit here the last few years of getting silt out of ditches to get the water to flow better. And I agree with him, it is frustrating when you don't get water to run where you want it to run. It is very frustrating. And I could see all the water coming off of that storage unit, too, coming down there, speeding it up. You know, like you said, machinery will be there, but I hate to put the burden on him, but, you know, I don't know whose responsibility it really is, you know?
Anyone else have any other, other comments?
I guess, I don't know how many feet that is, you know, from that property down to that culvert there, you know?
It's about three hundred.
Three hundred feet?
From, from the southwest corner, from the southwest corner of the existing storage unit property to the, to the culvert is three hundred feet. Now, the west property line of the two-acre parcel is about a hundred and ninety-two, a hundred and ninety-three feet, something along those lines. I mean, by rights, it doesn't do a heck of a lot of good to clean out that hundred and ninety-two or three feet if you don't clean out the other, you know?
You gotta do the whole thing.
Yeah, I, but, I mean, I've spoken with the Funkys a couple of times. They seem like reasonable people. If, you know, if we could work together on cleaning that ditch out all the way to the culvert, it seems like the right thing to do for everybody. And I, I do know this, when equipment's already on the land working, it's a heck of a lot cheaper to get the job done then than it is to hire somebody to come back in later and do it as a separate job. And one other thing that may or may not be accurate, I guess I'm no expert when it comes to permeability of crushed concrete, but right now, you've got water flowing off of pavement, and absolutely, when it's on a hard surface, it picks up speed. It would, in theory, it should come off of that pavement and, you know, hit that, that semi-permeable product and, you know, potentially slow down if I'm looking at the, the tile correctly, because right now, there are tile inlets. Well, may, maybe I need to go to the map. There's a tile inlet right here, and there's a tile inlet right here. You can see these light lines? That's where the, the water runs to. This, all the dark area is all paved, and then there's gravel here and here. And so, the water rushes down and hits this tile. I don't know where that tile daylights. I'm not sure where, where the end of the tile is, but I do know that there are two tile inlets here. So, maybe part of the problem is that, you know, there needs to be a way to slow the water down inside that tile. I, I'm not sure, does the, does the water come over the top of the ground, or does it?
Over the top of the ground. I'm not sure where those tiles outlet, but what I notice is it comes over the top of the road. Has it leaves the southwest corner of Smook there, there. And see, there's no, there's no culvert, there's no ditch, the ditch is silted in, so it gets, goes over the top of the road, because there's so much of it. You got a lot of water coming.
Yeah. So, really, I mean, the, to keep the water on the east side of the road, the ditch needs to be cleaned out from here to here, from the, this corner all the way to that culvert. Well, if there's silt, then it has to be able, you have to be able to at least remove the silt. If it's, if it's silted in, you, you should at least be able to dig that out.
But what I'm saying is, there could be rock, because different places, the rock, you see it, now you don't see it.
We, can I have a discussion like this? Because they can't hear over there when we're transmitting. Okay. Jeff?
You know, I don't think we're able to solve this problem right now. This land seems to be a good use for it, except for this drainage and local condition. And, you know, I, I think the idea of having a storage facility there is, is certainly reasonable and prudent, but I'm, I'm not ready to, to vote in favor of it at this time. I, I wonder if we could just defer action and see, you know, maybe I could have the county highway department take a look at it and see from a hydrology point of view what needs to be done, whether it's culverts, ditches, retention ponds, water towers, waterfalls, I don't know. But I, I just wonder if we, I, if I have to vote on it tonight, I'm not gonna vote for it.
Madam Chair, can I have Kevin come for one more second?
Sure.
Sorry for the up and down tonight, Kevin, but maybe this is something to help clarify my mind a little bit here. So, it does sound, to back to Jeff's point, oh, this is an appropriate land use. Well, I do kind of agree that there might be an issue with the water drainage. Point two you have on the list here, it says revised site plan must be approved by planning staff. Is hydrology a part of that site plan?
Is part, so the site plan that condition number two is referring to is based on the Red Rock Corridor?
Okay.
And hydrology has not typically been part of that. I guess it could be incorporated into that. The, yeah.
You understand where I'm going with that. I mean, my, my thought process here is, if we're approving the use tonight, you know, rather than trying to kick the can down the road, for lack of a better term, if we can allow the, the planning department to work with, you know, the, the owners and the neighbors to, you know, provide, excuse me, to devise a solution for this water issue, I wasn't sure if that would be, you know, was all encompassed in that, that number two or not.
I think it could be.
I'm not trying to overcomplicate things, I'm also just trying to keep, I don't want to keep kicking the can down the road if we don't have to.
So, the state's attorney just whispered in my ear that we need to be cognizant that this is a township road, even though, and it was testified that it's, even though it's a minimum maintenance road, it, we just, we, we have to be careful that we're not directing a private citizen to, to do work in that road without the township's, without the township's approval. So, maybe the, maybe the most prudent thing to do tonight is, if you want to move ahead, you could approve it with the condition that they work with the township to address the drainage on the east side of Ledrock. That could take care of it, because the township ultimately, maybe the township will agree to let them clean out the east side, but they, they need to get that approved by the, through the township, because it, I, I know that it was, I haven't checked into it, but RJ said it's a minimum maintenance road, and so that does imply that the township is monitoring it. So, we need to be careful that we don't say, clean it out, without the township agreeing to it, so.
So, so, got one more question along those lines. Just to get the driveway permit, they would need to work with the township already, correct?
That's correct.
So, even if we approved it tonight, this township could very well say, we're not approving your permit, or the, the driveway permit, which, you know, if you look at this, there's really another way to access that site.
That's correct, but...
You, you understand what I'm getting, I mean, there, there are restrictions. I don't want the, the neighbors to think, well, we're just kind of deferring it, and it's their problem now. It's, it's really not, because they're not getting a driveway permit without addressing the, the full property issue.
But, the flip side of that is, the township could say, give them the, the township could give them the driveway permit and then never address the drainage.
True.
That's the other problem.
Sure.
Madam Chair.
Peggy.
I guess my other question that we haven't had as part of this discussion is the property line on the east side of the property. I mean, the member of the audience raised the concern about how the site plan is placed and the potential of where, where that property line actually is.
That's true. We don't know the exact, it has to be surveyed.
Maybe just a condition, they require you to have a survey. Take care of that.
Any other questions for Kevin?
I guess, to Scott's point, I think it seems to me like the townships can always say, we don't care. And, you know, we've had that happen. We've had legislation and butted heads with the townships out there in Pierce, and it's, I looked at the map, it's not a section line road. It's just, I can show you other roads just like it that don't really count. I mean, who, who plows the snow in Lyons?
We do.
Do you, township?
Township does.
And you build them for it, right?
Yeah, that's part of it, yeah, yeah.
So, Adam, what do you think is the right solution with this?
You know, I'd like to see the township and them work together, I guess. If he's got the machinery there, I'd like to just say, hey, you know, I'd like to say, the township, yeah, clean it out while the machinery's here, but I still think they should chip in too for it, I guess, too. I mean, I think they should work something out, I guess. I guess if somebody proposed that to us, I think we'd probably jump all over it and say, yeah, go ahead and let's clean it, you know, and let's work something out, I guess. I don't know the right terms of working it out, but I guess you got the machinery there, that's half the battle right there, right now, is getting a crew there, you know? Yeah, I don't know how the, the best thing to work it out. I guess I'd like to hear proposals on how, how people do it, but I don't think the township should get off easy on it either, though, because I guess, I know, just speaking for us, we do, we clean our own ditches out, and that's on us, I guess. We like to clean them out, just get the water flowing, because we're not gonna rely on landowners to do that for us, so.
I can't believe the township out there wouldn't work with you people, even though I don't know any of the people on there anymore, but we always tried to work with people as best we could. RJ, if you have a comment, you want to come to the podium, please?
Well, I'd like to say, I think about eight, ten years ago, this was up in front of you guys. They were trying to do the same thing, put commercial use there, and if my memory's correct, I think it's in, in Kevin's notes or Scott's, that if, I think the township's conclusion was if they'd bring the road up to spec, to township specs, and the township would be interested in accepting the road, so take that for what it's worth, but...
He has a good point, that it may come up. Okay, we're gonna take any action on item number seven tonight? Commissioners?
Well, Madam Chair, I, I would say that on, on the recommendation of the condition three, the fence along the east side property lane must include screening slats to the entire length and be surveyed to set the, the actual property line. Don't you think that's...
Okay, anything else, Jeff, on there?
No, but we have to, uh, find a way to get the, um, township to, uh, bring this up to snuff, to the, uh, satisfaction of RJ here.
That should probably be condition number five.
So I guess we would ask the, uh, applicants to work with the township to bring the road up to snuff, making sure the culverts are under both driveways and, uh, send the property to the grass, um, waterway. How does any of that sound?
Commissioners, any other conditions you want on there?
Does staff have a better interpretation of item five?
I guess I would probably say something that, um, uh, petitioner must have, uh, road agreement with township regarding drainage of the site. Does that sound right?
Well, I worry that, uh, RJ will be, uh, still underwater when they're done. I don't know.
Let's step forward again, RJ. You have a comment?
And speak a little louder, you're kind of quiet.
Okay, the only other thing, back when this was up in front of you guys eight, 10 years ago, it, it got turned down, but it was my understanding they were gonna access through Rowena, because we were, we're having all the same issues as tonight, and nobody wants to own that road, Ledrock, or take care of it. And, and that's what I'm asking maybe the petitioner, is there a way to, and not that that's a good idea either, but that's, is my memory, that's kinda what they were gonna do is get access through Rowena off the east end somewhere. And, and so, I'm just trying to give you some more history, so, there you have it.
Sir, you have a comment? Please step forward, state your name and address.
Bill Forche, Rhonda's husband, 26673 Brownstone Avenue. We own the property directly to the east. And as RJ was saying, when this was going on nine, 10 years ago, that, uh, I believe his name is Klein, asked me to quitclaim my share of Brownstone, which, may I go to the map? May I go to the map?
Sure.
By the way, we can see the map right here. It's, uh, come around, it, come around to the front here.
Come to the front, right in front of you. There's the map, too.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Approximately this part of Brownstone is vacated. I was asked to quitclaim my share of Brownstone here, and on the old 1888 plat, this was Jasper.
Wow.
Asked me to quitclaim that to him, along with this part of Greenwood, which I refused to quitclaim to him. So, that's where that all comes out, whereas they were trying to access from the east. I believe that's it. Any questions?
Thanks for bringing that up.
Yep. Thank you.
Uh, Brian Schmidt. Um, I, I may be wrong, but I don't know if the best solution is to have the traffic come through town around the east side and then the south side of, of, uh, Bill and Rhonda's property to access that two acres. I mean, the, the Ledrock Avenue isn't in the greatest shape, but we'd have to build a whole new road in order to go around the east side, uh, and south side of Bill and Rhonda's property. It, to me, it would just make more sense to work with the, the township to get the road in better shape, get the ditch on the east side in better shape, so the road is more usable. Uh, you've got an existing road there, maybe, maybe it needs another layer or two of gravel to, to build it up and get it firm. And maybe, you know, cleaning out that ditch could, uh, prevent a lot of water from flowing over the top of the road. And, you know, it's your guys' decision, but building a whole new road around the east side doesn't seem like the greatest solution in comparison to just trying to improve the road that already exists.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Go ahead.
No, you're all right.
Ryan, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, we, I agree with Mike here, I don't like to kick the can down the road, but I think we need, uh, clarification of who's gonna take care of what before we move forward. That's just my opinion on the matter, but...
You know, I agree, well, to a point. I agree that there's gonna be clarification, and as much as I really hate to kick the can down the road, maybe this option is the most prudent decision to get some clarification on what exactly the township's willing to do, what exactly the, the developer's willing to do. Um, I don't know. I hate, hate deferring things, but, um, that might be the best option.
Is there a motion in your option?
I'll make a motion to defer for one month.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion seconded to defer conditional use permit, 21-71. Call those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. That item has been deferred for a month.
We'll move on. Um, old business. Um, I just have a comment about the bus tour. Um, I had a great time, it was a long day. But other than that, um, a lot of new things out there. We didn't get to go last year, so it was, um, eye-opening for me. And we did go through quite a few communities, so that was another good thing for me. I had no idea that the dairy operation was out there. And I had no idea that they were gonna do that thing over in Hartford either. So there's a lot of stuff, there is a lot of stuff going on that I guess I just wasn't aware of, so I was glad to be a part of that.
So Bonnie, do you remember what the business was that Del Rapids missed out on? Or they missed out on having a, uh, a business move there because of a lack of water?
God, hmm. I can't remember. I can't remember it either. They talked about it. That's...
Okay, we'll move on to new business. Scott?
Okay, I, uh, prepared a memo for you, uh, which was in your packet, and this is something that I have been tossing around. And so I've started working on my ideas for a, let, for, for lack of a better term, a, a, a building eligibility sale program. And I know this is gonna sound a little bit crazy, but, um, as you know, there are many instances where we, where there are parcels out in the county that probably are very ideal for a residential dwelling unit, however, there's no available building eligibility. And, um, I sort of thought, maybe there would be, um, a, a mechanism where we could, um, utilize building eligibilities that have been gobbled up by the city. Or for example, tonight, we rezoned that parcel of property in Corson. There's an existing house on that, and once we rezone that to light industrial, that building eligibility will go away. So it'll become an industrial property, the building eligibility is gone. And when that house, uh, well, there are many other instances, for example, Kevin did a little bit of research for me. Uh, when, when, um, Foundation Park was developed north of town, there were approximately 16 building eligibilities that were, uh, gone from that. When, um, when, when George McGovern Middle School was built, there were five building eligibilities that were taken up and not utilized. So, so we do have some out there, we're not, we're not upsetting the apple cart too much by creating new ones. My idea is to use these ones that have potentially have been lost to us, and it would also serve as a revenue source, a potential revenue source for the county. So what I have indicated is that, or my idea would be that the county could sell a certain number, zero, one, two, whatever the county commission just would decide. Those building eligibility numbers would come off a list of properties that have been annexed or rezoned. And we, we would, the sale could be done either by a, um, auction or a silent bid. The county commission would decide that in a meeting in November. And then, they would also set a sale date that would occur between January 1st and the 31st. And then, once the sale is done, the buyer, the way I have this prepared, the, the buyer of that building eligibility, you have to put some money down, but then they would have 90 days to apply for the conditional use permit, because I still feel that there should be a condition, uh, should be an overview, overview, a review process of, of where that building eligibility is going to go. And we talked about this in, internally, and one of the other options we talked about was just saying if it met certain criteria, you could place it. If it was so far, you know, if it didn't, if it met the distance of a, of, from a CAFO, if it wasn't in the floodplain, if it was a certain size, we would just allow it. I'm of the personal opinion, I would rather have the conditional use permit, I'd rather have it go through a conditional use permit process. So everyone has a hearing, has an option to come and speak. And I know that might be a little bit painful, because what we, what you potentially will hear is, "When I bought my property, I didn't think there'd be any more houses." And so you potentially would hear that with, with these. So if a conditional use permit was not granted, they would be refunded completely all of their, of their money, and no one's, uh, out any money, just no, no building eligibility would be sold. So my idea is that, uh, that's, that's the idea. I'm seeking, this would be an ordinance that would have to be approved by the county commission, and I'm running it by you, uh, not only to get, well, not, to make you aware, but also to, uh, see if you feel it's appropriate, to see if you feel I've left something out, if I should add anything. So, uh, I'd be glad to answer any questions, um, but what are your thoughts on the matter?
Yes, Madam Chair. My question was, so if somebody buys this, if I buy a building eligibility, you know, I already have 80 acres out there, so I got two, so I buy this one, I'd have to come down for a conditional use permit then, right?
Yes.
I would still be, I would still be eligible to buy it and use it out there on my 80, right?
Yeah.
That's what it was, that's the way it's gonna work.
So we, you know, we maintain the maps. For example, let's say you have 80 acres, just farmland, you have two building eligibilities. If you were to buy one, we would, we would add that number, we would add the building eligibility number to your, whatever 40 acre parcel you want. So that particular 40 would have two building eligibilities. And we would note that it was, just like with through a CUP, it was granted, and you'd go to the CUP file and see, oh, it was one that was acquired through an auction or a sale program.
That's what I just wanted to make sure I was clear on.
So would, um, uh, would Adam be able to buy a dozen eligibilities and stockpile them, or?
Over time, I suppose, you know, that's, that goes back to how many building eligibilities the county commission wants to sell at a time. I, I, I think, you know, it's, 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 uh, market-driven, and you don't wanna sell too many at a time, because it'll run down the price.
Well, I was just wondering if he'd have to build it, or?
No, I don't think you would have to build it, uh, right away, uh, build a house, but I, I, I can, I, I sort of see this as a, a benefit of someone that needs, you know, that wants
Right.
that wants to get one. And we've had, we've had several cases where we've had people, um, that have come in, wanted to rezon property. I, do you remember two years ago, the people up on, on, um, up off Slip Up Creek Road and 258? The elderly couple that had, uh, there was the schoolteachers, and they just had too much land. Beautiful property, that would, you know, that could be something, they didn't have a building eligibility, but they tried to rezon their property to rural residential. That's when we see most of these, is when someone wants to try and spot zone, you know, one acre of land in the middle of, of, because they, they wanna have a, you know, a child. I, I've talked to the, you know, a lady, um, just directly north of Yogi Bear Campground on, uh, the Arrows Road. You know, they have six acres, and she would like to have a, a, a property, she'd like to have her son live there, build a house, so her family member could live there. Well, it, it's, it's not zoned correctly, zoned ag.
Well, and what was the deal on Pam Holman's, uh, 10 acres, that she had a shed on it, or a little horse barn?
Yep, she had a, she, she was able, she convinced the farmer to sell her 10 acres to put her horse on, or eight acres, and she got a building permit for an ag building right before I started, uh, to allow an ag bill, an ag building. But then later, she moved out, she built a different house out west of Hartford, and took her horses out there and wanted to liquidate that parcel.
That 10 acres was walking distance from her first house, right?
Uh, I'm not sure where she lived exactly.
On the block, yeah. Anyway.
But that didn't have a building eligibility, and she tried to rezon it, and it didn't go anywhere.
Beautiful piece of ground.
Yeah.
Yep.
Flat 10 acres.
So, so my next, my next step with this is, I, I wanted to get some feedback from you, but then ultimately what I'm gonna do is sit down with the, with the county commission, sort of in groups of twos, and sort of run this by them, see what their thoughts are, and, uh, but, you know, commodity, you know, those building eligibilities are almost like commodities, and farmers, you know, rely on them, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna like overwhelm the system with building eligibilities, but I think it might be a useful tool. And we, we have had people, as recently as maybe two months ago, come to the county commission under items from the public and express their, their need, that they think we need to have more housing.
Yes.
We need to have more housing in the county, we need to rezon things and loosen things up, but...
And once or twice a year, I get a call from someone that's bought 12 acres and...
Too much land? So any other, any other input, any thoughts?
We've got some input from back there.
Well, it would still, you, it would, the, the density zoning would stay in place. We would just free up basically one or two eligibilities which would be sold. And it, and that money would go into the general fund.
Are you talking one or two? Is it a little bigger, or are you talking 16 or?
No, I never said, I never said we were gonna sell 16. I said that we lost 16 building eligibilities when Foundation Park was annexed into the city.
And there are thousands of eligibilities in the floodplain that cannot be built.
That's correct, but those are all still privately held.
Yeah.
Those are still in existence there.
That's how the Peterson subdivision came to exist.
This is a positive thing. I get calls all the time about, "Where can I build my house?" or, "Do you know of anything?" or, or, "Give us some ideas." And our realtors are the same way. I mean, we get lists constantly saying, "Do you know of anything?" and they're just, there just isn't. And this may free up some land, so people have that availability to build their home.
I do get a lot of calls, I will tell you, I do get probably five or six calls a year of people that buy six, eight, four, six, eight acre parcels, and realize it's beautiful, it's the idea of living out in the country, and six acres sounds wonderful, but after they've mowed it for two or three years, six acres is a lot of land, and they, they'll call me and say, "I really decided that, you know, I really only need two acres to live on." So it would be awesome if I could sell those other four acres to someone. And then you tell them, "No, you can't," because that, there's no building eligibility, and, I mean, potentially you could if you could talk to... And, I mean, potentially you could if you could talk to maybe the farmer around you, but typically they're, those building eligibilities have been used, so.
Brian has his hand up.
I, I just got a quick question. For, for unused building eligibilities, like Jeff had mentioned in the floodplain, is it possible for a landowner to sell that building eligibility to be used in a different location in the only contiguous property?
Yes, that's correct. The way that the zoning ordinance is written now is you can only transfer building eligibilities on adjacent properties between, and the owner has to be the exact same. So it has to be the same owner, contiguous.
Well, I think it's interesting, I probably will mention it tomorrow in our commission meeting.
Well, and I appreciate you mentioning it, and I'm, I'm looking for feedback, and so it's not, if you think of something, you certainly can email me. And I'm just trying to, you know, be creative and think a little bit outside the box because I do get a lot of calls of people that really would, they, just like the Pam Holman property or the old, the older schoolteachers that, then at least they could, if it's valuable enough to them, you know, that they could purchase it. Or, you know, in June, we had the, we had the people that were running the bed and breakfast, do you remember the bed and breakfast? But really, they needed a second building eligibility so they could have their son live there to take care of the dad with dementia.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's right.
So it's cases like that, that maybe it would work for them to buy one. I don't know how many acres those people had in Valley Springs. I mean, if they had two acres, you could subdivide it and someone could live and take care of the dad with dementia. So, okay, thanks.
Thanks, Scott. I will adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone.